So just tell me when you're.
I'm good.
You're good? All right, it is two o'clock. We're gonna go ahead and call us back out of recess that we recessed from yesterday, and we will be going ahead and conducting the lottery for provisioning centers. First of all, welcome everybody who was able to be here and anybody who's live streaming. Anyway, thank you for being here. Myself, I am Jeremy Howard. I'm the city clerk. Jacob Kane is here as the planner. We have a couple other people that will be helping us out, and you may see them talking back and forth a little bit to make sure that we're on track with what we're calculating as far as the numbers that come out. So Marilyn and Becky are here from the clerks department and the planning department as well. And got a few slides that we'll go through, and we'll give you a chance to ask any questions if you have those right after we get through that. So obviously, we're gonna have 58 ping pong balls today. They will all be numbered one through fifty-eight. The first round that you'll see me do is actually going to be randomly assigning those numbers to the applications. So each applicant has a number. That number will then be assigned to a ball number. The cage will be turned clockwise five times to mix up the balls. The cage will then be turned clockwise to begin the drawing. The numbers will be called aloud. I'll likely repeat them twice so everybody can hear. We'll also be putting them up on the screen so you'll be able to see those. On the second round, the numbers will be drawn again, and that will actually be what is determining the conditional authorization. The first three obviously are conditionally authorized. Anything after the third ball will be put on the waiting list, balls four through fifty-eight. We'll be just repeating the same three steps as we did the first time to do that second draw. Those conditionally authorized today, balls one through three, will actually be effective as of today. And then final authorization obviously is contingent upon completing those next steps as outlined in the city ordinance. Spots four through fifty-eight will be on the waiting list until the three facilities have received final authorization. If you do wish to forfeit your spot on the waiting list and receive a refund of the $5,000 application fee, that request should be submitted via letter signed by the applicant. Include the entity name and the parcel number that is associated with the actual application. Again, here's our contact, myself, Jeremy Howard, Jacob Kane, city planner. If you can, if you'd like a business card, we have some business cards back in the back as well. Just checking to make sure I went through everything for you. The official record of the balls will be kept at the table here, but you will see it on the screen as well. Jacob will be putting that on the screen so that everybody can see. That will also be recorded on the stream that we are live streaming and broadcasting to Channel 188 as well as being recorded. We do ask that you remain silent during the drawing, obviously, so everybody can hear the numbers that are drawn during the proceedings. Are there any questions on the lottery process? Not necessarily what happens after the lottery, but the lottery process itself. All right, we will get started. So I'm just going to put all the balls, one at a time, into the cage. All fifty-eight balls are in the cage. Switch these around. So this tray will be used to assign the ball number to the applicants. You'll notice that slot seven has been basically covered over because the applicant number seven actually withdrew ahead of the lottery, so we'll be skipping over applicant seven when we actually assign the balls. Application number, sorry, yes. I'm going to now spin this counterclockwise to mix it up five times. One, two, three, five. Now we will begin the random assigning of the application number to the ball number. Let's see, application one is going to be ball fifty-one. Sorry about that. Application two, it will be assigned number ball forty-one. Application number three is ball thirty-five. Application four is ball number thirty-six. Application five is ball number six. Application six is ball number fifty. Application seven is skipped, so application eight is ball number thirty-one. Application nine is ball number twenty-four. Application ten is ball number twenty-one. Application eleven is ball number forty. Application twelve is ball number twenty-six. Application thirteen is ball number twenty-nine. Application fourteen is ball number fifty-six. Application fifteen is ball number thirty. Application sixteen is ball number fifteen. Application seventeen is ball number seventeen. Application eighteen is ball number two. Application nineteen is ball number eight. Application twenty is ball number twenty-seven. Application twenty-one is ball number fifty-eight. Application twenty-two is ball number ten. Application twenty-three is ball number forty-four. Didn't pick it up. Application twenty-four is ball number twenty-two. Application twenty-five is ball number nineteen. Application twenty-six is ball number three. Application twenty-seven is ball number forty-three. Application twenty-eight is ball number thirty-three. Application twenty-nine is ball number twenty. Application thirty is ball number thirty-two. Application thirty-one is ball number forty-five. Application thirty-two is ball number twenty-eight. Application number thirty-three is ball number forty-six. Application thirty-four is ball number fifty-two. Application thirty-five is ball number forty-nine. Application thirty-six is ball number eighteen. Application thirty-seven is ball number thirty-eight. Application thirty-eight is ball number eleven. Application thirty-nine is ball number fifty-five. Application forty is ball number seven. Application forty-one is ball number forty-seven. Application forty-two is ball number four. Application forty-three is ball number nine. Application forty-four is ball number forty-two. Application forty-five is ball number fifty-seven. Application forty-six is ball number twenty-five. Application forty-seven is ball number one. Application forty-eight is ball number fifty-three. Application forty-nine is ball number thirty-seven. Application fifty is ball number fourteen. Application fifty-one is ball number forty-eight. Application fifty-two is ball number twelve. Application fifty-three is ball number sixteen. Application fifty-four is ball number thirty-four. Application fifty-five is ball number thirteen. Application fifty-six is ball number five. Application fifty-seven is ball number twenty-three. Application fifty-eight is fifty-four, ball number fifty-four. Application fifty-nine is ball number thirty-nine. We now have our randomly assigned numbers to applications. I'm just gonna take a quick picture of this. So we have that for our records. All right, I'm now going to put all the balls back into the cage, one at a time. We'll switch trays. Close the cage. Switch these trays. So now we'll be drawing out the ball numbers, which will assign the waiting list numbers and the conditional approval numbers. We will be probably going a little bit slower this time, just so we can make sure that we're getting the right information over here in our spreadsheet and our tally sheet. You guys good? Any questions? So I'm going to mix this up counterclockwise five times. All right. Now we will be going, starting out. Didn't pick one up. So this is ball number thirty, is draw number one, and is conditionally approved. Ball number thirty-six is draw number two, and is conditionally approved. Ball number twenty-three is draw number three, and is conditionally approved. Ball number fifty-one is draw number four, and is on the waiting list. Ball number nine is draw number five, and is on the waiting list. Ball number three is draw number six, and is on the waiting list. Ball number twenty-six is draw number seven, and is on the waiting list. Ball number eighteen is draw number eight, is on the waiting list. Ball number thirty-seven is draw number nine, and is on the waiting list. Ball number seventeen is draw number ten, and is on the waiting list. Moving forward, I'm just gonna not say waiting list because all the rest of them are on the waiting list at this point, from four on through the end. So ball number sixteen is draw number eleven. Ball number fifteen is draw number twelve. Ball number forty-five is draw number thirteen. Ball number forty-six is draw number fourteen. Ball number one is draw number fifteen. Ball number forty-four is draw number sixteen. Ball number nineteen is draw number seventeen. Ball number fifty-five is draw number eighteen. Ball number twenty is draw number nineteen. Ball number two is draw number twenty. Ball number twenty-seven is draw number twenty-one. Ball number twenty-two is draw number twenty-two. Ball number four is draw number twenty-three. Ball number 28 is draw number 24. Ball number 47 is draw number 25. Ball number 35 is draw number 25, or I'm sorry, 26, is that right? Check me. Ball number 35 is draw number 26. Ball number 32 is draw number 27. Ball number 48 is draw number 28. Ball number 7 is draw number 29. Ball number 52 is draw number 30. Ball number 41 is draw number 31. Ball number 38 is draw number 32. Ball number 8 is draw number 33. Ball number 25 is draw number 34. Ball number 54 is draw number 35. Ball number 34 is draw number 36. Ball number 39 is draw number 37. Ball number 6 is draw number 38. Ball number 12 is draw number 39. Ball number 57 is draw number 40. Ball number 11 is draw number 41. Ball number 29 is draw number 42. Ball number 53 is draw number 43. Ball number 10 is draw number 44. Ball number 31 is draw number 45. Ball number 50 is draw number 46. Ball number 50 is draw number 46. Ball number 49 is draw number 47. Ball number 56 is draw number 48. Ball number 5 is draw number 49. Ball number 21 is draw number 50. Ball number 13 is draw number 51. Ball number 58 is draw number 52. Ball number 42 is draw number 53. Ball number 24 is draw number 54. Ball number 14 is draw number 55. Ball number 33 is draw number 56. Ball number 40 is draw number 57. Ball number 43 is draw number 58. All right, that concludes our random draw for provisioning centers. Thank you for coming.